Okay, we'll go bring the council meeting to order. I'd like first half of everyone to stand and join or recite in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can you please do your roll call?
Jenny Baursholz.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Scott Holmheim.
Here.
Abby Wong.
Here.
Okay. Has everyone given a copy of the minutes to review from the last meeting on August 22nd?
Motion to accept them as emails.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign. Okay. Jamie, you want to start with some of that forms?
I have two event applications for the Madison Street Plaza. The first one is from Adams County Cancer Coalition. Steve Krishner is the contact for that, and it's an evening with Island Vibes. So this is a concert on Friday, September 20th, from 6 to 9, and Island Vibes is going to be performing. Two poor guys will be serving alcohol, and then Adams County Cancer Coalition will have other snacks that'll be available, but there won't be food trucks or anything of that sort, and I'm waiting on the liability insurance to come through, but signatures are all here.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign.
And then the next event is the Fifth Annual Re- cover, which is RJ Pittman is in charge of it, and it's a Get Silver, Save Silver event. So that is October 12th, it's a Saturday, and it's from 2:00 PM till 10:00 PM, and they'll clean up right after. They'll have a couple food trucks, some motivational speakers, and then some vendors on the plaza just sharing resources. They're expecting around 500 people. It's a free event, open to the public, and they are asking for people to get like a ticket ahead of time, just so they know about how many people will come. And again, I'm waiting on the liability insurance to come through, but all of the signatures are on that one as well.
I'll make a motion to approve of that.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign. Okay, oh, you want to just go ahead and do the, yeah, Archive Social?
So we are looking at adding Archive Social, which is a social media archiving company, and this is so that we stay in compliance with the open laws. Basically, social media is a public record, so we need to be able to go back and pull some of these reports if we ever get some sort of public records request, and the way that social media is set up now, I mean, I would have to go back months, and it would take quite some time if people delete their page or just disable their page, so those comments are all gone. But this is like in real time, it captures these for us, so if they delete it, I'm still able to go back and get them. They're offering us to be able to get started in September, and that's $849 for this year, and then next year it's $4,188 for the full year. It's just a one-year thing, and every year we're able to decide if it's, you know, if we want to keep it or not.
So it's $4,000 a year? Mm-hmm.
Yikes.
How many records requests have you received?
So, I mean, we haven't received any, but it's something that's been something a lot more than common, and I'll say like there's a lot of places around us that do have this. Right now, like Adams Central Schools has it, New Haven, Allen County, and it covers 12 different social media accounts for us, so we would have fire, police, the city, Parks and Recs, like we would have 12 different accounts within this that it covers. I do know that it fits in the budget for next year.
In this year.
It's been a hot topic at some of the conferences, that a lot of the cities are signing up for just because your liability can't produce the, I mean, even though you said if it's six months ago that someone made a comment on social media, you have to be able to produce that, which makes it kind of hard. Yeah.
Because you don't really own that, somebody else owns it.
Well-
Facebook's property on your platform.
But it's a public record for us.
Right, right, yeah, exactly. I mean, and who knows, the laws may change. I mean, we could do it for a year, and maybe the laws will change, but people will say exactly what you're saying.
But anything that's on any of our pages is up to us to be able to report on.
It's just a one-year contract at a time, so we can decide from year to year.
The crazy thing is, from when I started on council till now, everything is a subscription. Like before long, cities are going to be on the hook for $150,000 before the year even starts.
Right.
It was unheard of four years ago, a subscription, like-
Well, the police, they're going to, everything's subscriptions, everything's yearly fees now, and that's-
You can buy them again, this is the cost.
Right.
Like are cities getting sued over stuff with this, or what? I'm not quite understanding like the need, like, they're just wanting people's comments pulled up?
So people have, there have been lawsuits that have been done. A few of them have been stating anything from the past five years we need to have record of, and I wouldn't, I'd have to pull the paperwork to say what that exact lawsuit is, but yes, they've been happening, coming from the courts, saying we need to have this record.
It is, I mean, our social media accounts are considered public records, we are responsible for maintaining them. I mean, what Jamie's saying is accurate. The five, the, I haven't seen a court case where a city was held to produce social media records for five years past, but I'm not arguing that it's out there. That's, that's a long time, that's a lot to have to sit through or go through, but the subscription is something that would certainly help the city maintain compliance with access to public records, so, and it's-
Just get rid of it, please.
Uh, yeah, I'm like, how bad do we need this stuff?
Well, it's just there's, she could post something as nice as, hey, this is the trash schedule this week, and there's a couple people that just want to constantly make negative comments about anything. Some of them you wonder if they're real people, or if they really live here, or-
Right.
I mean, I don't love it, but I think they gotta do it. I'll make a motion to accept it, or, yeah. Approve it.
It's always something that can be brought to your legislators, too. You know?
Say, I mean, this, everything's got to pay this much money?
Right.
Ever, ever just, since we don't own it, like once you put something on Facebook, you don't own it. Like you put a picture on Facebook, you don't own it, Facebook owns it. So everything that's on there is Facebook's, that's why it's interesting to me.
Why shouldn't they have to archive it?
Well, yeah, because we don't own it.
Or, yeah, why are we required to, to serve a notice for public record when it's not our record?
Be interesting. I don't know the answer. Apparently it's an issue, somebody.
Unique theory. I think that's a unique theory.
That is.
Yeah.
Scott, you lead the way.
Yeah.
You'll make a lot of cities happy.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Was you requested for the rest of the year, or the rest of the-
It's $849 for this year to get started, and that's so that I fully know what I'm doing pretty much before I go out on maternity leave, and can get other people trained, and then it starts in January, and everyone would be asked for that $4,188 to fully go, and they gave a discounted, prorated rate for us.
Which is what the $849 is?
And that includes a one-time $500 setup fee, so it's really $300 and some dollars for us this year. And that goes back, as soon as we started, it goes back throughout the duration that we've had the Facebook, the Instagram, all of it.
So that just capture what's there right now, moving forward?
No, everything that we've ever put up, it'll capture.
Since the account's been opened, really.
So Facebook does archive it?
Then, then why do we need to buy it? Why can't we just buy it whenever there's a request?
Because-
It wouldn't be archived at that point. Like anything that had been adjusted, deleted, edited-
She just said everything will be there.
Not if it's been deleted or edited, everything currently-
It's a snapshot, snapshot five years back from right now, or whatever.
Exactly, yeah.
Today, moving forward.
Yeah.
I like your thinking, though, Scott.
Yeah.
This is what this guy does for a living, he just wonders, he's dropping it around.
Raise, raise your point. I mean, like what do you, where are your concerns, or what do you?
I just don't, uh, because like I said, like you don't own it, so then why is it your record? But I'm going to go ask some folks.
Right now, because the courts tell us they're our record, and that we're responsible for being able to-
Official city account.
Maintain them.
Can we make an unofficial city account?
There's plenty of them.
Yeah, they're, I mean, are they selling even this resource to just common people? You know what I mean? Like if someone ever come after me and-
Well, they do have it, like they do say elected officials, if they would like one for like their-
Oh, no.
Yeah.
How long have they been around? Are they new?
So this is a part of Civic Plus, it's like, we have C- Quick Fix, they have a list of things they offer, and this is the same company.
Civic Plus?
Yeah, that's the, that's the parent company.
Okay.
And then they, you can go on there and look.
They have, they have text alert software, they have all kinds of stuff that you can solve for. They probably help get laws passed, so that you need their software, too. I mean, seriously.
They've probably already talked to their legislature.
Yeah. Okay, so I, was that a-
Yeah, I made a motion.
Some law motion?
Yeah. Well, to finish out, I'll make a motion to go ahead with the remainder of the year, and then even for next year's subscription.
I'll second it.
So motion is second. And this will give Scott time to-
And we can cancel this at any time if-
Would you be willing to make your motion for this year?
They're asking, will you make the motion for just this year, and then we can, we'll have until the end of the year?
Before we say, go ahead and spend $4,000 in January?
Well, Jamie says on maternity leave that's-
Yeah, but that whole, yeah.
I don't think this offer would allow you just to get that discount for that this year.
Oh.
You'd have to say this year and next year for this offer.
And we can cancel at any point, really, and get reimbursement?
It won't be invoiced until the beginning of the year for next year, so we have until January.
January will be whenever the invoice number-
Have it for a year.
What do you mean, it's not going to be invoiced? The $800 not to be invoiced? The $800 will come, yeah, next meeting, you'll approve that, but the- But she signed on the contract for a year and a half. But it would be for remainder of this year and next year.
Yeah.
$4,188 is for 2025 calendar year.
About in 1231, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion of a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Aren't that social?
It'll go back five years?
It'll go back from the point that we started our page.
Chris, do you want to come up?
It'll go back five years from that point, or is it just-
You can turn all comments on your page.
You can each post, like it's, every, every post you have to turn off.
It's been going around, a lot of emails.
Or you can elect-
Elka or something?
Or you can elect not to allow any comments of any kind of the whole page. Like Monsey is taking an approach where they have a clean page where there's no comments, and then they have a dirty page where that's where all of their communications are, so it allows a free flow of-
Okay.
We're requesting some ARPA funds for the USOP program that we're trying to update our policies for the last, I mean, it's probably been a good 10 years since they were updated through case law, court law, things like that. If we start this year, it'll cost us $2,792.60 for the rest of the year, with 25% off next year, which Kevin's budgeted for that, and she's asked for next year, our budget already, the fact is passed. This program is called LexiPole, they will keep track of our training for us, reports, the law enforcement training academy. Any new case law comes up daily, weekly, or monthly, they send it out to us, they all try to read it, accept it, so means they acknowledge it, so they can't find out, no doubt, they don't know it. So this will be all of our policies, from uniforms up to court law, and cherry stops and firearms. Most departments have, well, they kind of looked at this two years ago, and they love it, it's a good program, and it saves a lot of, for lawsuits down the road, basically.
So it's another subscription trying to hinder lawsuits, like we've just solved.
Basically, yeah. Yeah, we can't buy our cameras and order a lawsuit.
Yeah, is that a total for next year?
Next year's total, can't put in the budget, I think it's like $11,000.
I can remember off the top of my head.
The fire chief looked at it, what'd he say, Jeff, $13,000? Our portion would be $13,000. So if we do it this year, but our portion now, we'll save 27% next year, or 25%. I talked to Walts County, Portland City, Allen County, I mean, they all use it, and they use it for training also, so we can get trained online and do life.
All right.
With that also.
So right now, you're just, you've already budgeted for next year, you're asking for $27,92.60 of ARPA funds-
So I sent it for the rest of this year, and that'll help us get our-
Because it's not budgeted this year.
For next year, then, we're paying $3,400 right now for just a basic, I suppose, for a year.
I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA funds for the SOP program for the rest of the year.
Second.
Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign. Okay, thanks, Chris.
LexiPole, what is L-E-X-I-P-O-L-O? Am I getting one else? Sorry.
Okay. Um, next, Ian, you want to talk about the, um, Club 720, who's working on the possible apartment complex, and they want to do a TIF run, so they want, they're asking Crow to do a TIF run to see what taxes it would generate to help pay for the project, so.
What mayor's been? Um, I think, right, we've got this potentially great new riverfront development project. We're working on developing the financing structures for that in order to see how redevelopment commission and use of TIF revenues could potentially be used as a bonding source or a revenue-backed bond of some kind. We need to have a better understanding of what kind of TIF revenues can be generated. Crow has the capacity to do that for us, they need council approval, and an engagement letter from Crow. At this point, I'm thinking, seeking council approval, because it is a city project to be able to engage Crow for the purpose of doing this TIF run. I know that the project is at a point where it is, it is nearing needing to have that information to assess how we move forward, so now would be the appropriate time. At this point, I would be requesting them to provide us with a quote and a, and a contract, and would bring that before Board of Works' next, next meeting.
What's Crow?
Crow is the city's municipal advisor.
Okay. How much does it cost for them to provide a quote and contract?
I don't have their, I don't have their rates typically, it's kind of an end on-
They'll be free to get the quote from them.
Sure, yeah, they're not going to charge us for that, but, um-
I couldn't tell you, I have no, I'm guessing $1,000.
Based on labor hours, and whoever they use, if it's-
In their professional, I mean, their-
Most of their quotes are not T quotes.
Yeah, they're usually not to exceed $10,000 or $5,000 are the standard.
Is there a design on that project yet, or is it just still in the feasibility study of this project, or where's the?
There's a somewhat design, there's still things to figure out through the steering committee, but once they're, they're trying to figure out the funding, the capital stack, on what's going to, how it's going to be, we have a, the developer's very interested in doing it, it's just whether it can be affordable. So I think this is one step to see what TIF dollars could help the project, I mean, it would basically be tipping itself, I mean, it's not tipping anywhere else other than that property, whatever the new taxes would be, could go into that, supporting that project. So there are somewhat renderings, but I think once this happens and the developer takes it on, then it'll, we'll go public with it, and it'll be a great announcement at that point. But right now, it's just ideas.
I'll make a motion to allow Ian to move forward to get in the court.
All in.
Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in, same sign.
Who made the motion again?
I guess if there are not to exceed amount, that would be-
Well, you're going to bring the quote back up and approve it, right?
That's fair, that's fair.
Yeah.
Is there a timing issue as far as getting that done prior to, is that any done prior to October?
I don't think-
Well, the next meeting in September, probably.
Well, before the next, October redevelopment?
Oh.
I didn't know if that needed to be in, started-
I would think if-
It's not, it's not part of, it's not for the-
It's not for the public hearing.
It's not for the R tip, this is a separate, distinct project.
This is a broad individual tip, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I think you had something else.
Uh, oh, I gave everybody a copy or a summary of budgets. From what I gave you last time, there was a couple adjustments, the lit, there's some IT expenses, so that increased about $25,000, and the county was saying we have to do some IT upgrades, open the fire station, so that was included in there. And then actually, the lit, economic development, the CEDIT, freeing up some money in other places to help with the Second Street project with a redevelopment, was able to add more to that CEDIT budget for this year, so that went up as well. So those are the only two changes that I know of. And then what we'll do is, and I've already scheduled my, or I've already submitted the Form 3, so a public hearing is scheduled for next, next meeting. So a public hearing the next meeting, and then, based on how that goes, adoption at the first meeting in October. Yeah, Form 3 is published on Gateway, anybody wants to go see it.
Any more discussion?
Any questions about it, or?
Pretty impressive, it's pretty close to the same, from year to year.
Uh, yeah, and that's, and that's, with that, with that CEDIT change, including that, you know, we really only saw a couple thousand dollar increase besides, besides that, and that's late years in advance.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
Anything? Um, well, you want to bring up the rail?
Oh.
I mean, it was approved, it was approved by Board of Works, but, you know, if I make sure it's good in the council.
Go ahead.
All right, so Board of Works approved acquisition or acceptance of two parcels of property that are currently owned by US Rail Vest. So for the last five years, the county has kind of been working with the rail company in keeping these two parcels of tax sale, because they're county taxes assessed, but most recently, they were back behind, the utility companies were back behind Shermeier along the rail property, doing utility work, and there is a lot of nice stones laid back down there, and it kind of brought up the notion of those properties being deeded over to the city for potential future use, whether it's for trail development, and utilities agree to leave the stone there, in case the city could use it for later on anyway, but Mark Burry contacted me a couple weeks ago and indicated that US Railroad Vest Corp. JMS Building is prepared to deed the city two parcels totaling just over six acres between the two, but they run north-south, kind of parallel to Winchester Street, and then cross over Winchester down toward the new jail property. So I am asking for council's approval for the city to accept those two parcels and have them deeded to City of Decatur, comma, Parks and Rec Department, that allows us to have them titled in a format that makes it a little bit more easier accessible for grant funding for trail systems, if that's a potential use. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in, same sign.
All right, thank you.
Should open the city's ability to clean it up, keep it cleaned up.
I really hope the idea of more trails, too. I think that people love that.
Okay.
The road striping, the GAs approved a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, has been completed, that's the first round of it, center by and edge by, starting along several local streets. Next week will be heavy trash collection, some parks, it looks like it's this week, but people are a little confused, and it is next week, so please get your stuff out early, so we can get it cleaned up. This week will start 23-2, many crossings, which is all the milling and resurfacing, will be in 11 different areas, almost 12 different areas of the city. It's going to be a longer drawn-out process than normal due to scheduling. The building will potentially start tomorrow and go on for about seven days. They will work Saturday, and they will not work on Sunday, but then they will work home next week, try to get all that milling, get any stuff completed. Initially, they were supposed to start paving on September 12th, now it's not until September 17th. Just keep in mind, it's all subject to change at this point, it could be bumped ahead, it could be bumped back, whatever. And then, once that is completed, then the second round, pavement markings, stop bars, crosswalks, what's that, will commit to play, that may not be completed about mid-October, but it's, there's a lot of things going on here in the next six weeks. On Monday, I believe it's the night, Development Commission did approve to have Milestone, which is formerly owned by Perco, due to the handicap- which is formerly owned by Perco, due to the indigap grants at Thirteenth and Winchester, and signalization, and preparation for the trail extension and in such, along there, that work will begin on Monday, on the night. So, expect some minor delays out there, basically, just different times, where they need to move some traffic, go along and pour concrete into the one lane. It's all been permitted through, and not, and not aware of it. So, it should go pretty seamless. They have all their subs lined up, waiting on each other. Looking a little bit forward, probably in the next two to three weeks, there'll be some utility relocation and replacement of five points. Still have all the details and stuff worked out once that starts. We will give you plenty of notice, and that will last for about two to three weeks while that work takes place, and then reopen for the rest of the winter, reopen in plenty of time for the gallop upgrade. It's just all in preparation for this winter, and then they give an evaluation of the gas station property and start prep for spring construction. And that's it. Did you get all that up? Still, still scrubbing?
How's that, how's that going to affect the, uh, upgrade?
It will not. It will not. It won't. We don't need that. Jeff, by then, all the pavement will be patchbacked, yeah?
All right, thanks. Chris, you have anything else? Jeff?
Tentative date for the Fire Ops One-O-One class is October nineteenth. That is a Saturday. The Friday before, we will have some training on how to use SCBA to get you ready for here. We'll get some letters out there.
Okay. Kurt? Ann? Bill? Josh?
Yeah, they're close wrapping up the head wall on here, so, uh, hopefully, pretty much maybe a little bit of rip, kind of, with the curbs.
Okay, good deal. Carrie? Jamie? Okay, council, anything else? Anna, Ken? Public? Media, anything?
Make a motion to pay the claim.
Second.
Motion to pay the claims, second. All on favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's second. All on favor?
Aye.